Good evening and welcome to the Wakefield Public Schools School Committee Meeting of Tuesday, May 14th, 2024. We have just exited Executive Session, returning into Open Session. And if you could, we'd like to start by the Pledge of Allegiance.
Pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. And moving on with a reading of the mission statement. The vision of the Wakefield Public Schools is to graduate students who are confident lifelong learners, who are respectful and caring members of the community. Our mission is to prepare students for college, career, and community by providing rich and challenging curriculum, high-quality instruction, and educational experiences that meet their individual needs and interests. Now would be the time that we would have public comment, if there was anybody in the studio, which I see none, or if there was anybody joining us via Zoom. And there is no one online. Moving on to our Student Advisory Council, I think we have Vanessa.
I'll be coming soon. They're doing senior assassin right now. They're waiting for the boys tennis team to come back. Sign up, it would be possible to rearrange the agenda.
Happy to.
Thank you.
Are you nervous? Are you nervous? About assassins, not this.
I didn't do it, so I'm already out.
Check under the table. All right, so move on to the consent agenda, I think we have a motion.
We do. Move that the school committee approve the minutes of the April 30th, 2024 School Committee Meeting, and accept the minutes of the May 9th, 2024 School Committee Policy Communication Subcommittee Meeting as presented.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded, any discussion? Seeing none. Judy, you want to do a roll call vote?
Are you sure you want me to do a roll call? I can see you all.
Okay, then we'll just raise our hands. All right, so those in favor. I think with everyone in attendance, that is unanimous. Moving on to Superintendent, do you want to do budget items before Superintendent comments?
We were going to rearrange, if that's okay? Website, then middle school, then budget at the end, if that's okay?
Great.
Okay.
So thanks so much for being here tonight. Doug, do you want me to kick off, or do you want to?
Please.
I mean, I speak for both Doug and myself. This project has been a long time coming, I think something that we've been talking about for a couple of years now, just how to take our website and just make it more user-friendly, current, have all the information, parents, teachers, the community are looking for. Diana's been in these conversations for several years too. And this year, just, we had a meeting at the beginning of the year, just to really kind of set the timeline, we felt like this was a year to really dig into this project. And Evan has started with us at Wakefield Public Schools, and Diana saw him as a great recruit for this project as well. So the two of them have been at this since the beginning of the year, where we laid out just some big-picture ideas for what we were hoping for, and they blew it out of the water. And I think they far exceeded anything we ever would have thought could have come out of those early meetings. So tonight, we thought we would give a chance for them to showcase their work to you. I know they had reached out for you for feedback on the school committee side, see if there's any other questions, and then we'll let you know the timeline on opening it up for public use, or for it to be full-time, our website, which is the plan for next year. Diana and Evan, if you want to get started.
We have the video. So we're going to show a short video before we speak, and then we'll take questions and answer anything that you have any sort of questions about.
Oh, I should probably introduce your title. What did you want to say, where you work? I know it, and I'm taking it. But everybody else doesn't, so it'll probably be nice for you to just introduce where you work.
Yeah, I am the Library Media Specialist over at Woodville.
And I'm the Library Media Specialist at the high school.
Thank you. Yep, we're good.
Hope the audio's not on.
Muted, I think. The mute button's on.
Oh, the mute button.
Yeah.
This exciting project aimed to enhance the user experience for everyone in our school community. Today looks for the key goals that drove this transformation.
Our top priority was making the website as user-friendly as possible. We streamlined the navigation, making it easier for everyone to find the information they needed quickly. We also reorganized and clarified the website content to improve its overall clarity. Additionally, we implemented systems to ensure information is regularly updated, keeping the website fresh and relevant.
Our new website acknowledges the varied needs of our community, encompassing students, parents, educators, alumni, and residents. To ensure seamless experience for all, we've implemented a modern design with intuitive icons that facilitate effortless navigation across all of our webpages. Furthermore, we centralized academic resources and activities to foster student success, while a dedicated dropdown menu streamlines access to our robust student service departments. In the spirit of transparency, each school's data and core values are prominently displayed. Additionally, each school page features a designated area for principal updates, calendars, social media integration, and other critical information.
Ensuring seamless integration with Google Workspace and Google Sites was another key goal. This integration streamlined workflows across the district, boosting overall efficiency and currency of information.
In the spirit of inclusivity, we integrated automatic translation services empowered by Google Tools. This meant our website became accessible in multiple languages, making information readily available to everyone in our diverse community. No matter what language you speak, you can now navigate our site with ease and access to the information that you need. Our website will automatically default to the user's preferred language, except by their device settings.
Staying informed about school events just got easier. We integrated individual Google Calendars for each school, accessible directly through the website. These calendars are synchronized in real time, ensuring you always have the latest information on important dates, like parent-teacher conferences, school holidays, and extracurricular activities. We're also exploring similar integrations for school meals and athletics, further enhancing transparency and communication within our community.
We revamped the employee page to serve as a one-stop shop for staff resources and job opportunities. Staff gained access to a private section for collaboration, discussions, and confidential information. This private section fosters a sense of community and facilitates collaboration among staff members. Meanwhile, for prospective candidates, a public-facing section was created to showcase job openings within the district. This streamlined application process makes it easier than ever for talented individuals to join our team.
Building a strong and vibrant school community is important to us. We implemented social media integration by embedding our school's social media feeds directly onto the website. This allows visitors to gain a fresh look at the exciting and dynamic life of Wakefield Public Schools. It's a great way to showcase student achievements, share important updates, and highlight upcoming community events. Strengthening these connections with our stakeholders fosters a sense of belonging and collaboration.
We are thrilled to introduce the Alumni Portal page, a dedicated space that celebrates the legacy and achievements of our former students. Alumni can now reconnect with their alma mater, access your books dating all the way back to 1907, and in the future, alums can use this page to stay updated on reunion events and alumni initiatives. This serves as a way to honor our rich history and maintain lifelong connections with our graduates.
Thank you for joining us. With these exciting updates, we're confident that Wakefield Public Schools continues to be a thriving hub for learning, innovation, and community engagement.
The URL for our new site is wpsk12.org. We're looking for feedback from the community and have included a form on our website. We'll also be messaging out the link in the principal newsletters. It's our goal to start transition to the new site in July, with full implementation in time for the next academic year.
We hope you liked it.
Thank you so much. So we made a video because I have a tendency to wax poetic when I talk in front of a slideshow, so we're hoping to keep this nice and tight. I watch these at home, so I know how long they can go.
Yeah, and otherwise, you guys can watch this at home too, if you need to see it again, if there's any questions that come up. And I think, all right, the main thing here is, we know that as much as we're proud of the site, we need as much feedback as we can get, so we're really hoping that we can get this to as many people, and whatever, people have what they like, we want to hear what they like, and anything that can be fixed, anything that doesn't work, we just want to hear from everyone, so. So the main point there.
I have a handful of questions, I just want to start by thanking you for all your hard work on this. My first question is one you just made me think of, which is, are we going to send out communication to the whole district and tell them this, you know, this draft website exists to get feedback on it?
So yes, the intention is that the principals would send it out in their newsletters, and we'll also share it on social media.
Okay. My two areas of questions were really around the calendar and news. So on the current website, there's this like third-party system used for a calendar, and that's used for like scheduling parts of the building and stuff. And I didn't really see, I love the Google Calendar, because I like how it can incorporate into people's, you know, existing calendars and stuff, but I didn't know where you were planning to have that calendar, or is that going to go away and be replaced with something else on the new website?
The facilities calendar?
Yes.
So the facilities calendar, I think we're going to maintain, at least for the foreseeable future, that Google Calendar is really just for public-facing items, like current events that are occurring within the district, but the facilities calendar is used internally by a number of people.
Yeah. Okay. And then my other area of questions were around the news. So one of the things that I like about the town website is that you can get an email and you can sign up for what news you want to get, and I didn't know if there'd be any ability on this website to do that. So for example, the Galvin, I'm going to use an example, they do a daily announcement, but the problem is, if you don't go out of your way and go to the site and click on it, you don't see it, and if you just saw it in your email, maybe read it for five milliseconds and see there was something important. So I was curious if there was a facility to do that on the news.
Yeah, so like the town, if you are interested in town council, do you know what you're referring to? Okay, yeah.
It's not something that we've explored yet, but I think it's something we can definitely pursue. I think that makes a lot of sense to have that, and maybe there could be an integration with Power School or something else.
Looking to it.
Okay, and then the other one was, did you envision a way there'd be more news than would fit, like, I don't know if you envision with a scroll bar or something, because on the current site, there's like a history of news, but on the sample one, there's only one news article, so I can't really envision what it would look like if there were pages and pages of older news that you may want to look into or read?
Yeah, I think our plan there is, obviously, we don't want there to be this ginormous thing that's going to go all the way down forever. I think the idea is that we'll put like a button on the side of where the news is, that we'll keep in archived position, where we'll keep all the older news, and we'll just kind of, once we see that it's getting too dragged out, then we'll start to switch things over.
Perfect, thank you.
I just want to say, I love this. Kara sent us the video earlier today, so I'd watched it, and then she sent the link, so I was kind of poking around. It's so user-friendly, everything that you need to go to for the schools, like, there's things right there where it says like the policy book, like, I'm just thinking of things parents need to get to, like, right away, the handbooks, the policy books, like, you had the bullying policy, like, right there, like, front and center, like, there's just so much there that I'm like, like, Power School, because I always forget how I get to Power School. And the website now is not the most user-friendly, and this is like really exciting. I love this, so, great job.
They really, I mean, they really started from scratch. They tried to, you know, think about ways within current website, but it just made the most sense to organize it in a totally different way. I couldn't agree more.
It's so like, clear, everything is so clear, I love it.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, the alumni portal's pretty cool. That's a good idea, to like try to get like alumni engagement, so. I never would have, I never would have thought of that.
We're all going to find, we can find some embarrassing pictures.
Did you really download all the yearbooks?
So nearly every yearbook, so it's actually powered through the BB library and the Internet Archive. It's existed for a long time, but I just don't think that we've communicated it out well, and it's amazing that it exists, it's very cool. There's only a couple of years that are missing.
Okay, that's great. One question I had, and I'm just like really bad at this stuff, for the language translation, so how does that work? So if, so you said it was like a default, like on your browser, so are you saying that if you click on, like, when you go onto the website, is there a special thing you'd have to click to pick a language?
So, do you want to take this question?
So, the way that it works is that if you're, whatever device you're using, if you have your device set up for a specific language, so say your English isn't your first language, and you use your phone for Spanish, or whatever it is, when you go to the website, it should automatically translate for you, so it's just going to work, and it's just going to integrate automatically.
Okay.
So you don't have to really do anything for it necessarily.
And I was connecting with a couple of our multilingual kids, and they typically don't click on something like that, they have something that does it for them. So when they're on their Chromebook, if it's powered by Chrome, it automatically translates it for them. Even on the phone, on both Android and Apple, there's a reader option, and you can toggle between different languages. And we could put a widget in each and every page, but it makes each page load much slower, and it's very clunky and cost-effective.
Just to piggyback on that, is it, does it use Google Translation Services? So any language that's available under that sort of, that rubric is available here?
Correct, yeah, and that's another advantage of using a Google Site over something else.
Yeah, because I know in your instance, you had Spanish, I think, and so I started wondering about like Portuguese, and sort of Mandarin, and.
Yeah, there's a number, like, it's a huge dropdown menu that appears, it's pretty incredible.
That's great. And I'm sure that sort of populations that use that probably already have it defaulted, so it'll be nice for them to just have, oh, it's already, it's there, like every other sort of app and instance I use.
Yeah, exactly.
Great.
So I'm sure many of you know that our old website, or the way that many districts develop their sites, is it's a contracted service, right? So they'll kind of put this out for bid, they'll have technicians kind of develop a prototype, they'll be accepted, and then they build a site. A lot of the infrastructure, or a lot of the ability to change those kind of builds is often proprietary, so you have to continue to engage the company at an additional cost, right? And so, so this website is about a year in the making or more, in that conversation has been going on for quite some time about, you know, how could we make this better? How could we make this more accessible? And, you know, Diana and Evan are a remarkable team, remarkable team, they will not say this, they make a recording, come in, and they're remarkably humble, but they are brilliant, brilliant with students. And in this build, in us sharing with them what kind of our concerns are, what our challenges are, parents' ability to get to the bullying forum, right? I mean, you're spot on, right? And so, so all of what we felt like we were learning, and problems that we felt like we had with the website, we shared in conversation, and they literally just took this, not only the information that we provided, but they also sought out information from many, many, many other sources, and only made it that much better. So, and you heard Evan say, you know, and we're still seeking information to make it better. So we could not be more pleased with the build, we could not be more pleased with the openness, and we would much prefer to invest in our own personnel to do this than to be held, you know, at some, by, at some odd with, you know, a vendor to say, yes, we can't change your website, or we're going to do it for this, you know, we'd much rather have a regular consultancy cost for our, for our own personnel to do this work. And you guys crushed this, absolutely crushed this, and so, thank you so much, I really, really, we can't tell you how much we appreciate your work. You're really well done.
Thank you for the kind words. I will say, one section I was looking for, that I know from the other section, because it's where I go, is under like Families and Community, or so there's like a dropdown. And so that's what I went looking for, I was like, there's schools, there's curriculum and data, I'm like, I wonder, I'm going to say that that isn't here, and I noticed it's not there, because that's what you drew your graphical sort of icons off of, anything that I was going to that section for, you've put on the homepage, and you've given it sort of a good graphic as well, so, better, is generally what I'm saying there. Yeah, it's, and even sort of stylistically, it just flows, and so it's, it looks like you put a lot of hard work into it, you've thought of different things that you could put into it, the alumni section, even what you've done with handbooks, the forums, athletics, the events calendar, the Google Doc is just genius, because the amount of people in the community that see the stuff that sort of school committee puts out in PDF, somebody in the community puts it into a Google Doc and then shares it out to like parent groups, it happens all the time. And so the fact that it could be here and easily accessible for maybe people that don't have access to those same family groups, people that are newer to town, or people who, you know, sort of just have challenges there, this is great. So I hope I will continue to offer feedback, I hope other people in the community will continue to offer some feedback, and not inundate you, but hopefully be constructive. This is fantastic.
Thank you. Thank you. The one item I just noticed is, I didn't see the contact us under the school info, and that's something that, you know, made me think of it today, but it's, you know, I think it's always great to have the phone number for the school, how do you call in an absence, who's the principal, and assistant principals. The other one that I think will be important for next year is there may be some adjustment to the school hours, so seeing the school hours and early dismissal times in one place, and then the one that I thought of today, which is, okay, the phone system stopped working, how do I reach the school? Like, I heard from multiple parents today who, you know, had to call the school today, and the town phone system, or Verizon, or whatever, went offline, and, you know, they didn't know how to contact or who to email. And some of that may be that, like, each school should probably have like a designated, like, not a personal email, but like a school email that, you know, goes to the, to the admin staff, and now some of the elementary schools have that, for example, but I'd definitely like to see that contact us under each of the schools, and maybe I just missed it. And then, you know, incorporate some of those additional ideas into the page in addition to what's there now, but thank you, I think this is great.
Yeah, so in terms of next steps, I think bringing it back to our administrative team, again, talking it through, are we missing anything, anything additional at the school level? Diana mentioned asking for more community feedback. We're also trying to figure out upkeep, because I think we kind of got into a little bit of a, brought with our old website about not keeping it as current as we would hope to, so we'll be talking again with our administrative team around how to have building-based upkeep, to keep the website as current as possible, and make sure that we stay on top of things. And then we will be, I'm thinking probably in our summer welcome-back letters, just formally introducing it to families as our new website. That's kind of our timeline right now.
Is the plan to change the website name, or is this just temporary, so people can access the new site?
So for the time being, it will eventually be shifting to wpsk12.org, just because it's shorter, but we'll have a redirect from our existing website to it for some time. We could transition back over to it, but the shorter website might work out better for us.
Okay, ready to go?
Anybody else?
All right, thank you all so much.
Thank you so much.
Thank you so much. Do you want to push down? Okay, Lauren's back. Do we want to get a quick update, or jump into the middle school?
No, no, because she's still alive?
She's here.
Okay, all right, good, good.
All right, we'll start off with academics. So the math MCAS is next week, on May 21st and May 22nd, for our 10th graders, so best of luck to them. Seniors start final exams next week. Students in World History and US History II classes will have the opportunity to experience Hate Ends Now, which is a Holocaust-immersive cattle car exhibit at WMHS, which will be on display Thursday, May 23rd, and Friday, 24th. And then I believe there are also after-school sessions that are open to the public, for anyone to join.
Then the sixth annual Megan Burnett Memorial Concert is going to be this Friday at the Galvin, at seven o'clock. Tickets are $5 for students and $10 for adults. It's going to be a great night, filled with lots of performances, the Triumph Honor Society has put in a lot of hard work into this, and it's going to be a great show, so.
For other school news, we had our last meeting as WMH seniors yesterday, so we learned about like Senior Week and Prom and everything to know, because it's a busy time of year for us seniors. The WMHS is also having a groundbreaking ceremony, which will take place Friday at 10:00 AM. WMHS is hosting a Memorial Day Assembly on Friday, May 24th. This weekend, the tennis team will also be hosting an electronic fundraiser on Saturday, May 18th, from 9:00 to 1:00 at the Dolberg School, and then Senior Prom is May 29th.
Thank you. Any questions? Okay, thank you.
Megan and Andrew, want to come up? I know Lisa Tibbetts and Aaron Bailey are on Zoom, and they'll speak to the extended math piece in a bit.
Hi, everybody.
Hi.
Good to see you. We brought the whole squad. Yeah, we got a request for a few updates on a range of topics, so we have a pretty, we hope concise, clear presentation that we'll share, and then we'll pass it over to Lisa and Aaron to talk math. Yeah, so thanks for having us.
Yeah. All right, we'll try to go through it, like you said, pretty quickly. So just updates on, right, the cell phone policy, that we had the yonder pouches this year, you may remember that from the fall. Just, you know, kind of a quick update, some of the things that we've been doing, we've been talking to various students, staff, some parents as well, just to figure out, like, how is it going? We've come up with a couple of good pros and cons, it's on our slideshow, maybe it's not.
Oh, do you have the clicker?
Oh.
Let me get it for you.
Anyway, we'll keep going, because, all right, we'll keep going. So some things that have gone well with it, I think it was interesting to hear from students that they too have recognized within themselves, reflectively, like, there is some structure needed at school to not have it, to kind of help us out with being tempted in the moment. So that was kind of interesting to have those conversations with a few of my eighth graders about it. And also, just recognizing that there was, you know, there are distractions throughout the school day, that the phones are, would have for them, and so it was pretty cool to just, like I said, talk to a few of those eighth graders and upper-house students that like it. You know, some of the things that we're thinking about for next year, right, like, every town is a little different, we talked about when we came here, we were like, you know, we want to try, the state is putting it out there, we'll see how it goes, and get some good feedback. Does it work for our community, does it not work for our community, is there maybe something else that we should be doing? You know, and things that we're thinking about is the cost, obviously, if the state will be funding it or not. And then, you know, addressing some of the things of, as you all know, as many of us all have, the watches, the watches are kind of like the new, the new distraction, right? So the phone is almost, dare I say, becoming irrelevant? But it is weird. So, you know, just capitalizing on some routines that we realized were kind of important, that we want to make sure that we're doing for next year regardless. So that's kind of like a very quick overview of the phone thing. The next, talking about, we talked about honor roll, and what this year, oh, I'm sorry.
Can we go back to?
Oh, sure, we want to go back to it, yes.
Do you want us to ask questions like this?
Yeah, maybe after every topic.
After every topic.
Yeah.
Good idea, go.
Do you have one?
You go first.
Well, so I, if we could just touch, touch a point on like the bullet point that you have, considerations for next year.
Yeah.
I know you said watches, I see appropriate model for grade five, what is, is there a different, are you thinking of a different?
So one of the things that we realize is, and, you know, jump in as well, but like fifth, there's not a, as the kids get older, there's not an overwhelming amount of kids with cell phones in fifth grade, right, as opposed to eighth grade, there's a lot of them there, and so just trying to figure out, like, all right, there's a lot of kids in fifth grade that have an empty pouch, because they don't have anything, except for maybe a watch. So then it just, it made us start thinking about, like, oh, all right, maybe we might have to just shift and do things a little bit differently for the younger, or as we get older. Just trying to be mindful about the fifth grade transition, because, you know, that's one of the things that we really always try to enhance and get better every year, so, what might be practical for them as 10-year-olds in our building?
The fifth grade teachers also expressed that the students are much more apt to follow their directions. Bingo, right? That's what you were. That's what we were thinking. It's just, it's just a different ballgame as you go up in the grades. And so it seemed a little bit like it is an elementary grade. And maybe this particular intervention was not exactly on track with with their developmental like stage. So it's just something we're thinking about. If we're thinking about what tool are we going to use? It doesn't have to be the same thing in fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth, and trying to be responsive to where kids are at and families are at.
It is interesting having a fifth grader seeing that like, so for a school year now, there's been a yonder pouch at the bottom of his backpack.
Yeah. Yeah, we gave them to everyone because it just was easier to do that. And then we realized the fifth grade, there, I would, I mean, it's around 50/50, it seems, in terms of who even has a device. And so it sort of introduced this system where it wasn't needed at the same level as in the upper grades.
Yeah. Amy?
I have two questions, so bear with me. One was, I saw, I don't take anything for, you know, truth, but someone said on the internet. So don't, I'm not saying it's it's true. But someone was saying that their kid forgot to unlock it. It was before like a long weekend or maybe even before vacation. And they were like, I thought there was supposed to be something to unlock it at the police station, but is there not?
There is. There was a little bit of, I think, depending on who is staffing the police station. I don't think the message got to everybody. And so we remedied that after I remember that situation.
Okay, because I was like, I don't know either.
We also have since, we we almost always have a custodian on at at the Galvin. And so I think there's been a couple of times someone's called and we've texted the custodian and they ran out with the unlocker. Yeah, though we've found a couple of different solutions. But yes, that was a little bit of a hiccup in that plan. But it is there.
Yeah, it is there. It is at the police station.
It is.
Okay, well, that's good to know. And then the second thing was, I just didn't know if you guys had any feedback from the teachers of like, how difficult it is to kind of police, I know that they have random checks. Like, is it difficult on them? Is it a burden? Like, are they saying it's not anything or?
We brought it up in our most recent team leaders meeting, which is made up of 20-ish representative teachers from each of the grade levels. And no, they didn't feel a burden with it. They actually, similar to the kids, they said, we're glad there's something. We're glad we did something because there was a need to do something. But they were also open to the idea that if a different tool or a different system was needed because of cost or because of something else, like now at least we've established that this is a clear expectation. And so, no, I think that they wanted to continue to shy away from a system that would require them to take someone's phone or to house it somewhere where they'd be kind of in possession of a phone just because that introduces a different accountability for them. So I think where we landed was it was, the pluses of this system was that it was in the hands of students. And by and large, cellphones were at least away, if not always locked in the pouch, and it accomplished that goal. And and some openness to what would that look like in the future if we needed to go a different direction.
Melissa?
So I just had a question about engagement. Did teachers really see an increase in engagement from the students in the classroom without having to worry so much about the phones? Was it a way to quantify that or did you guys talk to the teachers about that at all? The academics then?
I don't know if we had saw quantifiable engagement through it. I mean, I think one of the thing, the luxuries, I'm going to say luxury, that we have right now in this 2024 is every student's got a Chromebook in front of them. And so there are other ways to stay engaged or not stay engaged. And so really what what the the phone became is more like outside of the class. Run into the locker or go into the bathroom or go in somewhere else and being distracted there. And all of a sudden, my time out of the class is a little bit longer, you know, because I'm playing Clash of the Titans in the bathroom. So, which is, sorry.
It's also what we had as a reduction in the amount of time we were, as an administrative team, spending on in-school posting of inappropriate stuff, texting something awful, doing the meetups, although the meetups are happening with the watch now, which is kind of the next frontier of figuring that out. So there was a less time spent on on those pieces. They still happen outside of school, so we still spend time on on some of that, those issues. But it was, it was nice to have it. I'll say nice for us, but really the kids we talked to too, they're like, it's nice, it's nice to not have that going on in the background all the time. Just kind of a relief to not be focused on that during school hours. Thank you.
I work at a joint middle high school. So we always, as a high school teacher, we always find it interesting when we talk to the middle school teachers, how they're just like, cellphones aren't nearly as big a problem here. Like, there's other problems that they have in the middle school, but they, the cellphones aren't really as much of an issue in the class as the high school. I just, I didn't know if you, but obviously you're in separate buildings from the high school. I didn't know if you had any communication with high school administrators or teachers that kind of asking, how's it going? Interested in maybe bringing some kind of program, whether it's the yonder pouch or some kind of program into the high school. I was just curious.
They have, they have some systems that they use at the high school. I did talk to Amy about it a bit. And I think, similar to how we're discovering, like, fifth grade is much different in terms of cellphones. In eighth grade, I think it's, it is very different. I mean, I'm sure working in a middle and high school, it is a different feel, right? The use and how kids are, I think, probably even more, they're like us addicted to it, right? Than than there are yet in the middle school. So I think for us, this worked because it got ahead of some of that. I'm not sure what the answer is in the high school or what the administration is thinking, thinking about there. The other schools we've talked to across other districts, I've talked exclusively to middle schools who are they they call because they know we have it and they want to know how it's working and should they look into it. But I haven't heard from high schools, which is interesting.
I'm curious what you tell the other middle schools.
I was just on the phone with the principal in neighboring town. I kind of shared what we shared here. I think for us, it accomplished what we were trying to work towards. But I do think, depending if a school wants 100% compliance with a particular product, then the approach should be a little bit different. For us, we just wanted the phones away, gone out of sight. And we weren't really looking to, really looking to like have kids get them out and show us the pouch and separate in the spot checks just to make sure like the phones were away. But I think it would require a different level of maintenance if that was the goal. So that's kind of what I talked to principals about, what do they want to see in their school? And then what's the staffing model they have that could make that happen or or that would make it a challenge.
I think communities are different. Every community is a little different than what they might need compared to what we might need with our students. So, yeah.
And just to be clear, like, just for anyone who's watching, for all the millions of people who are watching right now. When you're, if you have a child that has a disability or needs it as a medical device, they they get the
Felcro.
Felcro pouch, yes. So I thought that that was great. I heard back from some parents who were very concerned about that. And then they were like, yeah, it was no problem. I got the accommodation. I got the Felcro pouch. It was no big deal.
Yeah, I think it's never been about having like a specific locked up thing. It's just that the idea of having a clear expectation that your phone is away. But yes, certainly if you need access for for any reason.
Just wanted it noted.
Yeah, for sure.
Yeah, yeah, thank you.
Okay, we'll keep going. Yeah, yeah. One of the, one of the other things that, you know, we talked about this year and kind of presented a little bit was, you know, recognizing students, but specifically with, in terms of grades and academics and in class and whatnot. And so one of the things we continued this year was the honor roll, right? The average of of a 90 or better in all classes. And so we will continue that again next year. We're going to roll it in as well. We heard a lot of good positive feedback from that. But also just to continue, we've had some unbelievable discussions with team leaders, with our ILT, just anecdotally at work rooms and whatnot with teachers about conversations about grading and what does it look like and equitable grading across all different contents. And so it's been, it's been a great discussion that we've had. We're going to continue with it, you know, as educators as well. But also remembering that, you know, school is a place where we should be recognizing a broad spectrum of kids and all the things we're doing. I mean, our orchestra right now is having orchestra night. You know, I know the high schools well is there. And so just celebrating all kids and what they're doing, what growth looks like, not only academically, but also in a bunch of realms. So that's kind of an update for where we're looking for the future with honor roll as well.
So when you're looking at different ways to recognize kids, so obviously student achievement is really easy. You get a 90, you're on the honor roll. You know, it's been like that forever. But I mean, you actually do have some data metrics of student growth. Like, you could, I mean, maybe you could think like of one type of award would be like the students that achieve the greatest growth, like, you know, they got from this percentile to this percentile. I know that, like, that's something that.
Yeah, I think this, this was just, there were some specific questions around honor roll, but we certainly have ways that we recognize, as Andrew was saying, lots of different achievements. And growth is a big one. I most often see that in team-based celebrations and awards. They'll do like the top scores and then the top growers. And it's like equal celebration of all of that because, yeah, you can, we can pull those metrics really easily. And they're often more powerful for kids, not more powerful, really powerful for kids who don't often get recognized, but who are making great progress. So we want to make sure that we're doing both of those things. And we also, this is a picture of our four-star generals, which we do each quarter just to recognize students who are demonstrating our I care values, which are not always the same group of students who are achieving honor roll. So it's a nice way to kind of cast a wider net in terms of just recognizing all the great things that that students are achieving.
Yeah, not only are our students on team, right? And every indoor team having these team meetings where they're celebrating kids. Then we have Aaron and I do a grade level meeting with the whole grade. And we're recognizing even a bigger, you know, breadth and scope of kids there as well. So, and we use, like even kids that have had great attendance that have made huge, huge improvements. With that, we've been recognizing as well. So we're trying, trying to find a bunch of pockets to do.
And this whole conversation came out of first team leaders, which is one group of of teacher leaders in our building, who we really wanted to codify all the different ways that we recognize students and see like kind of calendar them throughout the year so that we make sure there's a wide range of them and they're happening in different ways. We're communicating it out to families. And so I kind of brought up this question about what are those things we're doing? What do they actually mean? And then, as Andrew said, I traveled over to ILT to talk about like, well, what does grading look like across the building and where is it inconsistent? And so how would it feel unfair to certain students? Which is in itself a really interesting conversation that we're continuing on, kind of shaping some of our school improvement plan around for next year with ILT. So it kind of casts a wide net. As always, any of these topics, you start looking into them and you start having lots of interesting conversations across the building. So I'll go, but I know there was a specific question around this from this group.
So is there a plan to come up with more like awards recognitions for kids that don't typically get 90s or above? Like, and even the Galvin generals, that's kind of a hard one to get too. It is. So I've looked at what you need to get.
We have a, I don't have a slide of it, but we have like a table of all the different ways we recognize kids. It's not, we want to keep building it. It's not, we're not done with it. But that was where this conversation came from was.
No, it came up yesterday in the CPAC meeting and just making sure that it, you know, that all students are are recognized in some way. That, you know, some kids are never going to get a 90 across the board. And so how else can we recognize these kids? So that's all. It just came up in the meeting, so I just wanted to speak.
It's a good point. All right.
Oh, sorry. So I'll just say, because I was one of the ones that asked, and I think, you know, previously Amy Lehman about sort of the honor roll piece, just as a, the prompt was that I think we had seen a communication earlier in the year that this would be the last year that sort of seventh and eighth grade would be recognizing it. And while I applaud the four-star generals and and sort of celebrating individual students in their spaces, whether it's through sort of process and sort of growth or other spaces, it was, I think I was nervous about about stepping off of the academic piece and celebrating kids that sort of get the, you know, the high achieving sort of scores because they put some work in for that. And sometimes those kids might not be ones that are getting sort of recognized on the athletic field or in the band or on the theater stage. Or, and so that might just be the space where they excel. And then so they all of a sudden, they might be taking a step back.
Yeah, I think that was, we we got the feedback from from you guys around that communication. And it was use, it was really useful in that I think what came out of that communication wasn't what we had intended in terms of not wanting to recognize academic achievement. I think the teachers in the building, particularly in our two teacher leadership bodies, are really interested in where that conversation is going nationally. How are we making sure that our practices are producing lists of students who who is an equitable distribution of of kids who are achieving? And then heard loud and clear that like, no, like, don't get rid of that in the name of all these other things. Like, can we do both of those, all of those things? Can we recognize a range of students? Which makes a lot of sense. So that's, I think that's why this slide and not the slide of all the different recognitions wound up in this presentation and kind of the direction we went after we heard that feedback. So we appreciate it.
That's great.
Can I just, I'd like to just put a pin in something just to come back to it. And and ask the committee to just kind of think about this. And it intersects with what Kevin Fontenella was saying in regard to growth, right? Is this idea of, you know, our grading practices and how we grade and what makes a grade a grade is something that we are really thoughtfully thinking about and looking at. You know, the high school did a little bit of an analysis this year in a book study around grading for equity and really just thinking about, you know, growth. You know, Kevin brought up this point of growth, right? Someone that that is kind of, you know, easily achieving, you know, high grades doesn't necessarily mean that they're kind of achieving high growth, right? Which is your point, right? And so things like that and around what makes a grade a grade and what does it mean to grade for equity are the things that that Meg is alluding to in regard to what's happening nationally and what's being discussed. So, and I suggest putting a pin in this because I think we're going to talk more about this in the fall.
That was good. I think you tackled grading for equity at one of your ILTs too, right?
A lot of this also came out of the shared conversation with the high school.
Middle school as well, yeah. So that's great. Do you want to go to, oh, schedule's next.
Yep, yep. And so we also have simultaneous with all these other pieces, have been thinking about how we use the operational framework of the building, the schedule, to get at some of the, I mean, we've been in front of you guys talking about some of our persistent data points, some of the things that we're really trying to make progress with. And so one of the biggest mechanisms we have is the schedule. So I just was going to preview a couple of shifts we've made in the schedule for next year. But these are three big categories that we are trying to address. One is addressing this idea of having a fifth grade in a middle school, which is lovely. We love having the fifth grade at the middle school. But operationally speaking, it's always tricky to fit an elementary schedule and elementary curriculum expectations into a middle school schedule because the middle school schedule is a machine that has to run a certain way in order to get everyone where they need to go at a certain time, to have a specialist work and all of that good stuff. And also the fifth grade, more and more, we're asking them to implement curriculum that's designed for more elementary time allotment. So often there's a longer period for literacy, a longer period for math than we give in the middle school schedule. One of the things we didn't want to do was give up what I think is lovely in our schedule is that our fifth graders get social studies and science every single day, which most elementary students don't just by design and the way that the frameworks work. So we sort of set out to think about the fifth grade differently. We also know, we've talked in here about how fifth grade tends to be kind of a dip point in terms of our academic outcomes for students. And we shared that data with our staff with the caveat that we're not, our fifth grade teachers are amazing. They're incredible. They do amazing work. Many of you have students who have been through with their classrooms or are currently in them. But the structure of our building has been tricky for that transition. And so our data is telling that in a couple of different places. So we wanted to see what we could do there. And we worked with our curriculum coordinators to work there. And I'll show you what that turned out to look like in a minute. When we think about subgroups, we, we're trying to follow the lead of schools and districts that we watch that make gains with subgroups that we tend to struggle with. And they're not different subgroups than every district tends to struggle with because those gaps are a national trend and not a Wakefield trend. But those schools tend to start with those groups and figure out how do we, what do we need to do to service the students who need the most support? Let's start there and then build the rest of the schedule around it. So we've tried to take that approach more and more over the last few years. And so you'll see that in this schedule too, which caused a little bit of needing to scooch around some other things. But we think we've built it so that we can start with those populations and still have a pretty awesome schedule for for all students. And then finally, win, you've heard about win for a couple of years now, making sure that we put that in a space and time where we could do what we wanted to do with it, which is to create individual learning opportunities for students in grades nine through eight. It looks a little different at each grade level. But we had this year a split block in the lower house. So if you have a student who in fifth and sixth or sixth grade, they had their win block kind of right around lunch, 20 minutes, 20 minutes and then lunch in between, which is tricky for any, for any age group, but we found it particularly tricky for those younger grades. So what we did, and this might look like nothing to you if you're not used to looking at it. You're like, oh, what?
There it is.
Across the top are the four grades that we serve, fifth, sixth, seventh, and eighth. And then this is kind of the most general way you can look at the schedule. It doesn't show what the six-day cycle looks like. It doesn't show any of those fancy things, but it shows just. cycle looks like. It doesn't show any of those fancy things, but it shows just generally run of the mill, what, what day to day would look like for each of those grade levels. And it probably, you don't spend a lot of time looking at this, so you, it's not as exciting as it is every time I see it. You see the fifth grade has back-to-back blocks, academic blocks. The white blocks are academic blocks. So period two and three and five and six are back-to-back, which allows teachers to implement the curriculum with more autonomy and just better able to put the full literacy block in there and then also have time for social studies, but to be able to be thoughtful in their own classrooms about how they're organizing that. And the same with science and math. The win block for fifth grade is the gray block at the top as well as also the same for seventh and eighth. And then for sixth grade is at the end of the day there. That was a big desire of the fifth and sixth grade, which previously had it kind of split across lunch. I won't get into way too many other details, but the other, just to address the three areas we talked about. The first period and sixth period in the upper house as well as seventh period in the lower house offer times when service providers who might work with English learners or multilingual learners, who might work with language-based students, who might work with students with a range of different special needs can pull across grade levels. Which if you run a school is kind of a magical thing because then you're not trying to jigsaw their schedules over a schedule that's not very hospitable to that. So for staffing, it just makes a lot of sense for those students. And I won't get into too many details because there's a lot of detail there. But that's just something we wanted to share. It's been through lots of iterations. School council's seen this. PTO I think has seen this and our team leaders in ILT have spent a lot of time working on this as well. So sharing that. Yes, sir.
So with the new schedule, nobody's going to be stuck with a split lunch?
No, and that was huge. I have to give Erin and Andrew all the credit because we thought it couldn't be done and they did it. So, and it did, yeah, it was a lot, a lot of, they put a lot of time into it. We've organized this since January.
Can you describe what the split block is?
Yeah, split block has been something, has been a part of the schedule since we've come into the new school. And so it is a time in which a period is split by lunch. And so just the way the function of the schedule works, two of the grades in the school always had to deal with a split block because we've got seven periods. And we've done it, it's looked different over the years that I've been here, whether from you know, a period leading into the split block a little bit and then they go to lunch and they come back and have twenty minutes of kind of just you know, other stuff to do. So we thought if there was a way that we could figure out not to split a block and interrupt, you know, students' learning by lunch. And sometimes coming back from lunch is an endeavor in itself, getting back like, you know, trying to get back and filled in. So we just looked at it, Erin and I, what, what we could do differently. And we've made some small adjustments to the schedule. And also allowed us as a result to not have four back-to-back lunches. Currently our schedule has four lunches with a minute changing in between each lunch. I mean, we are getting kids in and out very quickly. With this particular schedule, we've actually given ourselves a little bit of a buffer time, which will give our kitchen staff a little bit of a buffer time to restock, cook, prepare again, cut down the line, the waiting in line. So there's been a couple of pros from, from this little adjustment. As we've sought to try to enhance fifth grade elementary schedules, we've tried to enhance common times for students, you know, multi-grade. Megan talked about it, but when you have a schedule that has been so grade level set, to try to find times where a teacher might need to service multiple grades, it's been hard. And so this is a, a way in which Megan said we can get, you know, as opposed to just grade level, now it's actually like maybe need an individual language learners, whatever may be special ed, where they can actually come together because they're on the same like level and the teacher can, you know, service them that way with a common time in the schedule. So there's been a couple of pros from it that we're hoping, you know, we can see some gains next year with it. The colors are all basically when the grade goes out to specialists. If you're just looking at it, that's when an entire grade goes out to specialists.
And are we still working on the five minutes and how it will be incorporated or is that incorporated?
I'm so glad you asked.
Yes.
Because, oh, I thought we, oh, you know what?
I don't know if it's in this one.
It didn't make it into yours, but in another version we can send you. We, because we just met with ILT yesterday, yesterday. And kind of ratified when team leaders.
My eyes hurt.
My eyes said seven fifty. So what you'll see is that in the, yeah, no, because you printed the new one, but this is.
Oh, I printed the new one. That's why. Sorry, 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 sorry.
But seven, so we'll start at seven forty-five versus seven fifty, which is, I think it sounds maybe a little harpine, but it's not because the doors open now at seven forty and kids have ten whole minutes to get to class, which proves not the most productive ten minutes of the day. So teachers felt, no, we can, they can definitely get to class in five minutes and we'll just front load that, that five minutes of the day. But then we split it across kind of the middle section of the, the day, the five minutes.
Periods two, three, four, five.
Those are the biggest transitions out to specials and like the greatest distance. And so a little, building a little more time in class to get into the learning during those periods. That's kind of where we're at. I don't know if it has to go through any further ratification, but ILT and the team leaders felt that that was a good way to use it. They didn't want to put it at the end of the day because teachers really like to pull kids for a little extra help between two fifteen and two thirty or to run detention or to do something on team at that time. That's a good question. Thanks for asking.
Question for you, you Doug or Dustin. Do we have to increase any of the hours for our school lunch staff to meet this or can that be?
We ran that by Dustin. Yeah.
We can do it inside of the same.
Correct. They were actually pretty happy because it is, they feed eleven hundred kids in like ninety minutes. It's like.
One of the things that we agreed on in negotiations was that this would be instructional time, right? So, yeah.
That seems significant, that lunch break. That twenty minutes must be a world to them to get that chance to reset the system. Yeah.
Yeah, or even just, I mean, Doug, you were there today. It's like, it's just a lot, it's a lot of moving, it's three hundred kids at a time in and out and over and then the food's out and it's just to be able to do that at a pace that feels better for the kids, for the adults making the food for even just like wash down the tables in between. It's a nice, it's a better, hopefully better setup.
I also appreciate the fact that, you know, the weather's a little nicer now and kids can get out, right? Kids love to get out. And I know this idea of lunch recesses is at middle school. Some people think, are kids, are they out of that? Like, are they too old? And they're not. And they're, they're just not, right? And so they get out and the younger kids, grade five and six, they revert to their elementary selves and the upper students stand around a little bit more. They don't want to necessarily run around and get sweaty. Took a while to get themselves looking like they look for the day, you know, and, and it's just a different thing. But, but I think you guys are doing a really nice job kind of moving people around. So.
Yeah, this schedule process was a ton of work. I think, you know, just to commend you and all the conversations that led up to this thing that you're so proud of. I know why it makes you so happy to look at. It's a lot of work. Yeah, absolutely. But really, really positive changes. Okay, do you want to jump into seventh grade?
Yeah. Hi ladies.
All right. You sent Erin a pencil patient.
Hi, everybody.
Hello.
So Lisa Tibbetts and I are going to talk a little bit about seventh grade extended math, just to give an update about where we're at with that. As you already know, last year we made a shift in how we are delivering the seventh grade extended content. The biggest pieces of feedback we got about last year from the family side of things. Some folks felt like their, their student didn't have the opportunity to participate in the initial kind of rollout of who had made the recommendation for going into Math Seven Extended. And then from the teacher's side of things, the piece of feedback that was most prevalent was around the amount of time that they had to deliver the content. And so some changes that we implemented for this year. We talked about participation criteria and one of the reasons that we started this work anyway was to increase equity and access so that students, more students could be participating in this extended learning opportunity. And so our criteria this year, what we decided to do is instead of us being some type of gatekeeper as to who could or could not participate, which did cause some difficulties last year, we decided to kind of paint the picture of this types of students who typically find success in this extended learning opportunity and then ultimately leave the decision up to families as to who should participate. And some, some families certainly reached out to the math teachers. Some math teachers reached out to families to encourage their child to participate. There was a lot of communication about it. So that was one of the big changes that we made upfront was to increase access and through the lens of equity by not gatekeeping who could participate. We also increased the time on learning. Last year we had it three times a week for one trimester. And then this year we have made it four times a cycle for a semester. So we have significantly increased the amount of time on learning. We also had an increased number of sections and teachers. Last year we had four sections. There were three by recommendation and then we added a fourth section that was during the school year. And so then there are five sections this year. And then in addition, there was the algebra leap last summer. And then because of that increase in the amount of time that was available, we were also able to make some changes to the instruction format, which aligns more with our math vision for what students should be able to know and do and how they learn math. It was, we are using a lot more of our lister of mathematics materials, which are more discovery-based and inquiry-based as opposed to just a little bit of kind of pulling resources from all sorts of places. And it was more traditional, here's how you do it. Now you practice. Here's how you do it. And practice. So those are some of the changes that we made for this year. Some of the data that I'm going to present to you next is a survey that we gave to our current Math Seven Extended students. This first question is how much do you feel you've learned by participating in Math Seven Extended? With one being I haven't learned much and five being I've learned a lot. So you guys can see that they're learning a lot. And then the next slide was asking about how they feel about pacing. The students last year also recognized that the teachers were trying to fit a lot of content into not as much time as would have been ideal. And so we asked about pacing for this year, one being it's too slow and five being it's way too fast. And so you can see kind of this Goldilocks effect happening here of like, it's just right for most kids. The next slide talks about how confident you feel in the math that you're learning. With a one being I'm not confident, I'm worried that I'm not understanding. And a five being I'm very confident, I understand the material very well. And so again, we're seeing some positive feedback around how confident they are and what they are learning, which is all eighth grade content, just to be clear. And then how much do you enjoy participating in Math Seven Extended? Again, generally speaking, they are enjoying it. One being I don't enjoy it, five is I love it. It's hard to get middle schools to love anything that is strictly academic, but you know what? Twenty-four of them said I love it. So I'll take it. This is some of the anecdotal feedback that they gave. We gave them a space just to give any, any feedback. So lessons and topics are broken down into ways that are easy to understand and fun. I feel like, I feel like that the pace of Math Seven Extended math that we're doing is at a good pace. Sometimes a unit can be a little fast, but overall enjoy and understand most of the material. This part Lisa really likes. The parts that I don't understand, I can learn quickly from other classmates. I like it a lot because I can learn things and discuss them with friends that I don't usually get to see. Very fun. Would recommend. Sounds like the overview. So the, the part of getting friends that I don't usually get to see, I'll comment on that a little bit as well. Because we needed five sections to accommodate the number of students who are interested, we have our three seventh grade math teachers teaching three of the sections. Lisa Tibbetts, who is the current five through, five through eight math curriculum coordinator is teaching a section. And then we also have an eighth grade teacher, Mrs. Bueker, teaching a section. Something I didn't include in the anecdotal feedback, but I'm just going to throw out there because she's here, is that there was some specific feedback for Lisa that she's awesome and I couldn't agree more. We also wanted to get some teacher feedback. And so specifically we asked our seventh grade teacher, well, the teachers who are teaching the seventh extended. One of them said, we have time for kids to engage with the material at a conceptual level instead of just memorizing rules that won't stay with them. Not having Math Extended during a split block, which was something they were just talking about, made a huge difference in their ability to persevere through problem solving. This was a positive improvement over the structure from last year because last year the upper house had that split block. And so kids were doing like a little bit of math and then going to lunch and then trying to come back from lunch and do a little bit more math. And it's, so that was a huge improvement. What we did with the fact, since we had to introduce two additional teachers in, on top of the three seventh grade math teachers, what we did is we made it so that no student had their own math teacher. And we did that because we kind of felt like, okay, if we just take some from Mr. Papalardo's, some from Mr. Kendrew's and some from Ms. Morton's and sprinkle them over to Mrs. Tibbetts and Mrs. Bueker, that some kids are going to have someone that they're familiar with and some weren't. And so we tried to keep things a little bit more fair, so to speak, by just saying, okay, you know what? No one's going to have their own math teacher. That way everybody is having an opportunity to learn math from another teacher and two of the teachers don't teach in the seventh grade anyway. Two out of the five teachers leading sections of Math Seven Extended stated they would have preferred to have their own students. But I also asked the kids that same question. Do you enjoy having a teacher for Math Seven Extended that's not your regular math class teacher? And fourteen percent also felt like, oh, I kind of wanted to be with my own math teacher. But the rest of them either said, yeah, it's cool to have another math teacher or it doesn't matter. Now, obviously one of the things that we want to look at is.
Did you want to?
Erin, hold, can you hold on one second?
I was going to ask you.
Yeah, I can't see you guys.
Oh, yeah, that's okay.
Erin, I was going to ask, so based on that feedback, were you planning to have teachers teach their own kids next year or not? Or what was the plan for next year?
Uh, I, I think it kind of depends on enrollment to be honest, because that dictates how many teachers we need. I personally think based off of like the kids' feedback and the teachers' feedback, but like a combination that we kind of just need to see where we're at with enrollment, but also keep in mind that like some students might prefer to have their math teacher and some might not. But it's not like we want to be asking kids like, who would you like for your Math Extended teacher? And like, that could get into some dicey territory. And we have amazingly qualified math teachers doing this across the board. And one of the things that students have given feedback about in when in general is that in the upper house, they oftentimes are having teachers that are not their team teachers anyway. So it's kind of a common practice for win block anyway. And we really only asked that question to the kids because the teachers brought up their feedback around it. So I think it depends on enrollment, but I think we would probably try and stick with an experience that feels equitable for students. So obviously we want to be looking at is the shift in how we're approaching Math Seven Extended working. And so the next slide is some markers of success. As a math person, I love data and I don't have like an overwhelming amount of data tonight, but I have what I think shows overwhelmingly that there is success to be seen so far. So what I have here is eighth grade algebra enrollment from a couple of years ago, from last school year. There were ninety-seven students in eighth grade algebra. This year we have a hundred and seventeen students in eighth grade algebra. And the projected enrollment, we currently have a hundred and thirty-two kids in Math Seven Extended. And we are projecting that like a hundred and twenty-eight of them would qualify for next year's algebra class in eighth grade. Ninth grade geometry enrollment, obviously we want to look at, are they continuing on a pathway of extended learning, accelerated learning in high school? And so since the shift is relatively new, we don't have a lot of data to look at yet. But that's something that I'll definitely be tracking as I transition into the role of five through twelve curriculum coordinator for the math department. So last year's group of freshmen, there were fifty-nine students in ninth grade geometry, which is the class you would take following an eighth grade algebra experience. This year there are seventy-eight students. These numbers might look low compared to what we have for enrollment at the Galvin, but I just want folks to keep in mind that the high school has a lower enrollment because students go to private high schools or the Vogue or other opportunities. And then projected for next year, if we look at our current eighth graders, there were a hundred and eleven of them recommended for geometry, which is ninety-five percent of the students currently in algebra, eighth grade algebra, which is roughly on par with past years. I don't have the data specifics on that yet, but it's something that I'm going to be gathering to make sure that we're at least on the right path. And then I do have some iReady data that I wanted to show you. iReady is one of the ways that we measure student success. So I have the last three years. This is the grade eight, MOI stands for middle of the year, iReady assessment. And so this is from twenty-one, twenty-two. You can see that at the middle of the year, about forty-eight percent of the whole eighth grade was on or above grade level. And then there was this kind of yellow section of roughly one grade below. And then twenty-four percent showing one or more grade levels below. And then twenty-four percent showing one or more um grade levels below or more than one grade level below. And then if you look at the next year. You can already see an improvement with the green increasing. And then if you look at the next year. Currently this year, we have an even higher level of green. So from two years ago, we went from forty-eight percent in the green to fifty-six percent in the green. We went from twenty-four percent in the red down to nineteen percent in the red. And so already I'm seeing some encouraging trends across the eighth grade. While this data is not accelerated pathway specific, it speaks to the impact that it's having grade wide. Which was also something we were seeking to accomplish. Ensuring that all students were kind of accessing. Had had similar opportunities and had students in the class that were able to also act as um peer role models. And that there was a more heterogeneous grouping happening. And so we can see that through this data, it's having a great impact on the grade in general. And so looking to the future, um, there's definitely data to collect or more data, always more data to collect. I'm gonna be looking at participation in math seven extended, getting teacher feedback and student feedback. Um, we're gonna be looking at assessment data that's getting collected. We're gonna be looking at the success of our eighth grade algebra group. We'll continue looking at eye ready. We'll look at MCAS scores. Um, we'll look at grades, keeping in mind some of the conversation around grading and equity. We will continue to gather teacher and student feedback about how they're doing in eighth grade algebra. We're going to also be tracking enrollment in accelerated math classes in the high school. Um, and if there's any more types of data or questions or anything like that, that could help. Inform my work as the five or twelve math curriculum coordinator for next year. I made a Google form which can be scanned with that QR code or got to with a link. Um, and I'm happy to send it out by email if it's easier as well, so that folks can have a place to kind of dump their wonderings.
Thanks, Erin. Yeah, so I know I know we talked about that on the community call, but just for anybody on the committee that didn't know, Erin is taking on a new position next year, as she just mentioned. Five through twelve math curriculum coordinator. And Lisa also, um, a lot of shifts on our curriculum team. Um, Marguerite Augen Braun, who is our current elementary STEM coach, is now taking on the role of elementary STEM curriculum coordinator. Um, as Lindsay Moska is moving on to a um data role in in Watertown. And Lisa has just been hired as our new elementary STEM coach. Um, so.
Great.
A loss for Galvin, but we're very excited to have her at the elementary level. So just a couple of shifts there.
Any questions?
Kevin? Um, what would be uh your best guess into why our ninth grade geometry enrollment grew from fifty-nine to seventy-eight students? Uh, from uh last year's ninth grade to this year's ninth grade?
Uh, well, there was an increase in the number of students that were in eighth grade algebra as well.
Oh, no, the yeah, the so the eighth grade algebra makes like that makes sense with increasing the net of like trying to get all the kids that can go there. But uh, but ninth grade, you also saw statistically significant increase as well. So I was kind of wondering if like in addition to the extended math, if we're talking about like COVID related factors or something else that could cause.
Yeah, that's a great question.
Just trying to just trying to isolate different variables that can help explain uh this. So, because I just.
Yeah, that's a great question.
Because that is a pretty big increase statistically.
Yeah, because I'm trying to think, Erin, the year, um, it it was twenty twenty-one that we did not, right, Lisa, you're shaking your head, okay. So then twenty-two, twenty-three, I I don't know. We'd have to look into it to figure it out, but I know that that was a big, in the program, there wasn't accelerated option in twenty twenty-one. And then there was the shift after that, but we can look into it.
Yeah. Just thinking of other variables, variables that could affect. Sorry, second question. For the uh, um, so it does look for the twenty-three, twenty-four data for the mid for the mid-year exam. Sorry, the uh, what do you call it, the middle of the year, eye ready? Um, so it does seem promising that you've you've got the red going down from twenty-four percent to nineteen percent. So that would kind of lean towards the argument that by expanding the net that you are actually gonna. By having more students being um within that grouping in extended math. That it would help increase, you know, some of those kids that uh might be one grade, one. Um, like one below grade level um to get to the green and yellow. So that seems, that seems like a promising um data point, just looking at.
It does. And just even that these students were in were in year four of our new um math curriculum as well, just thinking about. One of the huge, one of the challenges that we had before adopting the new uh curriculum was having. Um, potential gaps from grade level, grade level without the consistency, so. These students, Lisa, Erin, correct me if I'm wrong, they would have been in fifth grade with the, or you guys too.
Fifth grade.
Fifth grade. Yeah, so they had, leading up to this, um, pretty consistent instruction.
This was also the first year of our wind block intervention, so I think there's some impact too of targeted interventions for students who were below grade level.
Yeah.
Yes.
Can can you guys remind me again, what are the qualifications now to be in the extended math program? Because I don't remember that at all. Was it on here?
Yeah, sure. So as opposed to making them qualifications, we kind of just said like typically students who do well in this pathway. Are students who typically get in like the uh V plus and higher range in math. Um, they typically are doing well on their eye ready, either like at or above grade level. They are typically meeting or exceeding expectations on MCAS, um, and they like math. Uh, so there, those are, those are just some of the things. Um, it but it's not everything and there are some kids in there who like data wise maybe wouldn't have fit like that profile. Some of them are doing well and some of them are struggling. Um, and so we really just wanted to like paint the picture of like typically who does well. Um, but also recognize that like middle school is a time for a lot of growth. Um, I've taught seventh and eighth grade at the Galvin for a really long time and so I I've looped with some kids um teaching seventh and eighth. So, you know, we recognize that there's a ton of developmental growth that happens during this time period too. And some kids who weren't ready at one time might be ready in a few months' time. And so that was part of the reason also for like delaying the point of acceleration. Um, and I think that it increases the number of students who might show readiness towards the end of seventh grade with just that much more time to mature.
Okay, thank you. Appreciate it.
Melissa?
So, yeah, I noticed um that and if you want to go to the slide where you talk about. Um, how much do you feel like you've learned by participating in in math seven? I noticed that like twenty, twenty percent of the, around twenty percent of the kids that answered said that they're not really learning much at all. I was wondering if you think that that's because they already have a good handle on those topics? Or if they're so lost that they're not learning anything because they're so like in over their head?
I can speak to that as I'm teaching one of the sections. Um, and I think that. It would be a very, very tiny percentile that had any kind of grasp on the topics because it is all eighth grade math. And in addition to being eighth grade math, it's math that they would be seeing for the first time. So it's not as though they've seen linear equations in sixth and seventh grade, but we just haven't really called them that or we're not expanding on that. It's things like rigid transformations and dilations and scientific notation. This is all brand new material for them. So I think that um you're not seeing kids. I personally, from what I'm seeing, and not kids who already have a handle on it. I think that group may be some kids who are doubting whether this was a terrific placement for them because they are struggling a little bit. And I also think you can't take away the fact that these are middle school kids and we have. A number of them that are just kind of wamping through this survey like nah, I already know this. No, I know, I'm good with this.
Yeah, I know. I noticed your your survey response is not a hundred and thirty-two kids.
They are, um, you know, they're getting back, even when I'm passing back some assessments and I'm hearing them say, well, wait, no, I really know this. This was, this question wasn't right or, you know, that kind of thing. That's just a little bit of a middle school attitude that you're seeing entering into that. Um, but I, so I think the the kids who are, think they know everything, very small percentage. The kids who are feeling like they're really struggling is also small, but probably more present there.
Um, I also wanted to to really recommend, I I have a hard time figuring out if the program is successful without program specific data. Um, so like looking at the kids that did seven extended as a cohort and then following the cohort. Growth data from I already would be super helpful, like seeing where they were in seventh grade and then seeing where they are in eighth grade rather than just. Here's eighth grade this year and this year and then this year.
That's absolutely the goal, Melissa, because it looking back to where we were when we started. One of the issues that we that kind of prompted a lot of this was looking at our high school numbers and enrollment. On the accelerated track and that we just even or kids hitting exceeds expectations in MCAT. Like we were finding that that was a problem we were looking to solve. How can we um just create a stronger foundation? Um, so that kids stay with it through high school and we have more students. So that's what something we'll be looking to do um since last year, track all of these kids that participated um through high school to see.
I would say even trying to capture what's happening at the high school right now, so you have something to compare it to. Because if we don't know what it was like before when it was an honors class versus what it looks like now as extended, you know, what are we gonna?
I think right there, I'm confused. So do are you talking about like, when you say it was an honors class at Galvin? Is that what you're talking?
Yeah, I thought that that seventh grade used to be.
So there, so that's like a, I just want to clear that up in terms of, so. I think there's been a lot of concern that there's loss with this new model and actually from where we're coming from, we think that there's gain. So the difference, the difference was that it was kind of a select group of kids that met this like really kind of more rigid criteria. Recommended by sixth grade teachers that sometimes didn't feel like, ah, I don't know if I have the information. I need and want to start tracking certain kids in seventh grade. Or there's certain kids that maybe didn't shine the way they could have or hit those compliance checks marks on criteria. So like they were saying, we, the idea was let's cast a wider net of of kid for kids that could eventually. And should be exposed to higher level math. So now they're not only getting, um, so they're getting actually more time this year with the model. They're hitting all of the standards, they're hitting all of what's necessary for algebra.
Right.
Um, so I still feel like there there is that honors, it's not tagged as like a select group of kids all year together in one class. Now they have their their grade eight math plus the extended, but they still have actually more math happening with this new model. To to better prepare them for eighth grade, because that was, I think, a problem we were seeking to solve as well. The kids that we were sending up from seventh to eighth, just giving them a stronger foundation too. So I just wanted to clarify that.
I would just like to understand like where it was before and what, you know, getting to eleventh and twelfth grade.
Yeah.
Looks like.
Yeah.
So versus what's coming. So just so we have a.
One of the bullet points I see looking to the future is to track enrollment in accelerated math in high school. So if I'm hearing that you do have your eye on that, but we have to get like sort of a little bit more into this.
We need a few more years to track the kids, yeah.
I think Melissa's saying, maybe I'm wrong, but you're saying that we have to have the baseline, what it was like before.
Before.
What were the MCAS scores of like the tenth grade cohort and the ninth grade cohort before any of these kids hit the high school? And then compare that baseline information.
And we have that.
With what we have. And I and I said this.
Twenty eighteen, twenty nineteen.
Yeah.
Those years.
And I said this last year, I think, like obviously one of the big issues is like looking at our high school data, like you just said. Um, but like, and I think I said this last year, that we're not really gonna be able to evaluate this program. Really until this year's eighth grade MCAS, because yeah, last year was the first year in seventh grade. We're taking the MCAS this year. So we have the, we have the eye ready scores, which are useful for like one data point. But that that's gonna be like where you can really start to evaluate the success of this program. Um, and then use that, use that to compare to others.
And that's that's some, one of the other things I'd love to see tracked is the demographics of the cohort we're saying that we're looking at. You know, passing a wider net, are we actually getting a wider net or are we, are we getting the, a good representation of kids? Is it representative of the?
As someone who did the schedule for years and Lisa, you can, you're probably killing me for saying this. As a sixth grade teacher who had to make the recommendation for seventh grade math extended, right? We had three teachers, so that meant three sections of twenty-five kids. And where we arbitrarily made that cutoff line in sixth grade was like, well, why? You had seventy-one on the placement score, why couldn't I with seventy-two on the placement score not have gotten in? Like that, we were just taking it because we needed twenty-five, twenty-five, twenty-five. So now it's like, well, let's see who can actually do it that wants to do it and maybe find it there.
Right. And we found too that, I I mean, correct me if I'm wrong, but I think we also saw more of a push from. You know, if if parents felt like their their kids had the drive and wanted to do it, but maybe didn't meet. That they they wanted to push them to that, you know, higher level math exposure. Um, if they if they could and we saw more with that, we had a lot of conversations around that too and 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 we want to support that. We don't want to count kids out, um, because I think what we're also seeing, and I don't know if you guys can speak to this too, but when. You're forced to double up, if you if you decide later on that you want to go on an accelerated track and you're. All right, you're not, yeah, doubling up in high school is is challenging.
Yeah.
Feel free.
Um, well, talking about this kind of brings me back to when we had to do like the eye ready placement test. Because I remember like it wasn't really explained how this one test would kind of dictate the rest of like your math experience. And so I didn't take it realizing that it had that much power. And so I was just like, okay, it's just like a standard test, like I'll try my best and we'll see. Um, so then I ended up not getting placed into the math extended for seventh grade. Um, but then after I took regular seventh grade math, I was like, oh, this is kind of easy. I don't feel that challenge. So I talked to my math teacher, Mr. Papalardo, still, well, he was a great teacher. Uh, and he gave me like another placement test and then like COVID was kind of weird afterwards. But um, we were able to, I was able to be moved up to algebra one the next year for eighth grade. And it was a difficult transition not having taken the extended math class. But I've been thankful afterwards that I made that difficult transition then. Because I was able to take harder classes and this year I'm taking an AP math class. And I didn't have to double up because some of my other friends who weren't able to move up afterwards, they had to double up. And basically what that means is you can't really take like a fun like art class or culinary or. Um, music, any sort of like elective, so it's basically like all like math, science, English, like all that. So I'm very glad that I was able to switch last minute. But I think um making it so that the requirements are a little more like holistic and open, like definitely would have been beneficial towards me.
That warms my heart to hear you talk like that.
Thank you.
Um, I would definitely have to say the same. I've always loved math and luckily it worked in my favor. And I've been in the accelerated math program through this year. I'm in two AP math classes now. I'm majoring in math. Um, but I think it definitely would have been discouraging if I hadn't been placed in that. And if I did have to double up, especially as someone who is in music classes. That is definitely something at the high school that as far as scheduling goes, like. If the two math classes you're gonna be taking conflicts with your music class and it's just kind of a whole domino effect. And I do think that um opening that up to more kids gives. A lot of opportunity for kids that like math, because there are kids in B C calc right now that doubled up. They weren't in algebra in eighth grade and they wanted to take this class, they wanted to do it, but they didn't have the opportunity. But I think that making it easier for people to have this chance is definitely great.
Yeah, I love that. I love having the, I love that this district is committed to keeping algebra in eighth. I know a lot of districts aren't and I do applaud that. And that was my next question is, are there other onramps? Into those those accelerated classes or is if you don't take seven extended, you don't take eighth grade algebra? Like, can you just test it?
Yeah, uh.
That uh, that's a great question. I think um, right now it feels like taking math extended, considering that there were no barriers to entry. Is the way to get in for now. I think there's a chance to look at other onramps, so to speak. I'm not sure what that looks like yet and I would love for you to add that to my um questionnaire so that it's something that I can focus on as I move forward in some other work. But, you know, I think like last year we had the algebra leap program, which we used as a summer starter into algebra. Um, we felt like increasing the time this year in school and not having barriers to entry. Kind of negates the need for that, especially since we don't feel that uh truly a half of a year of eighth grade math content could be well taught. And kind of kept in your brain in just a couple of weeks' time over the summer. So um, we are not gonna be offering that as an on-ramp to algebra for next year. But I am looking to explore other ways that we can kind of look at our math pathways.
Thank you.
Could I just ask, um, could you just expand upon sort of, because I know that there were some questions about why that people saw that. Algebra Leap sort of came out that it wasn't a summer offering and people seemed concerned. But I think we had a conversation about how you actually didn't see a need for it. You were, you were actually going to sort of allow more kids into the program because it seemed like. Um, almost everybody that wanted to was signing up for Algebra Leap. Most of the kids that were taking it were moving into algebra. Um, and so why not just go back one step and just have them take extended math as an opportunity? So I think sort of drawing down that barrier sort of makes the point of why you didn't necessarily need that Algebra Leap program.
Exactly. Yes, thank you.
Okay. Sorry, Deb.
No, it's okay. We, and and that's something, I think we did, we saw that with Algebra Leap last. We, and, and that's something, I think we, we saw that with Algebra Leap last year, just in terms of excitement. We've tried different things, um, at the middle school level over the summer and we'll keep trying. If there's an interest in, in, if we can get the staffing, if there's a student interest in, I think enrichment's more the way to go with middle school summer support. We've tried intervention over summer and the kids aren't too happy with us. They're like, come on. But we saw that excitement with the leap last year. So we'll keep talking about that, um, you know, not like Aaron was saying, not as an entry point into algebra like it was for that transition year. But just kind of trying to work with Wakefield Academy and think about different opportunities for middle school enrichment over the summer.
I have one question on scheduling. Could, um, cause it might just be the terminology. Can you describe the difference between when you said the increased time on learning, three times a week a trimester versus four times a cycle for a semester? What is the, just what's the increase? Like I, I know it's there, but can you explain it a little bit?
We broke that down, Lisa and Aaron, by like how many lesson, right? We have that, I don't have it off the top of my head, but. I don't have it off the top of my head.
I don't have that off the top of my head either.
So many more. Yeah. So, um. We could get to that. Just how many? Yeah, go ahead.
Is it the A, the win A and the win B, that having it four times there?
Yeah.
It's having it four times and having it for a semester as opposed to a trimester.
And seven minutes supposed to 20 minutes.
Correct.
And not in a split block, right?
Right. Yeah.
That's my, I mean, just not.
Okay, I was thinking a trimester was more than a semester.
Uh, no, right. Semester's two, a quarter.
Semester's half the year.
Semester's half the year.
What's a quarter?
Trimester.
What's a quarter of a year?
Quarter's half a semester. There's four quarters in it.
All right, that's, I just need to listen to Kevin more. Um, and I guess I just had one, one outlier question. In the teacher feedback, where you said two out of five teachers leading sections of extended math, they'd have preferred their own students. But out of those five teachers, two of them didn't actually have their own students because they don't actually teach seventh grade math. So out of the, out of the five, like are the two that answered, they'd like to have their students, ones that would have their students? So is it really two thirds?
Yes, we're sticking to math. Yes. Yeah, yes. So yeah, two out of the three seventh grade teachers had expressed like, it would, like I, if I had had my own students, I feel like I already know where they are. I know where to take them. And so there is that kind of like curve of getting to know students.
Sure.
Um, I also know that before we like made the decision at the beginning to kind of quit students not with their own math teacher, that we had a conversation about it in the seventh grade PLC. And we said, hey, there are going to be kids who aren't going to have their math teacher regardless because we can't stick, unless you guys want classes of like 40, 43, we can't stick all the students with their own math teacher. Um, and so we talked about like what's fair to the students and also that if all five people teaching the class had kind of the same challenges of getting to know the students that they were not familiar with to begin with, that that was, that was just more equitable for students in that way. Um, and so I think like that initial feedback is like, oh man, I wish I'd have my own students because I know where they're at and I could take them to, you know, another place. I was like, yeah, and then we, we could have done that if you wanted large classes where you had all your own students. Um, and I think that then they were just like, oh yeah, okay, all right, that makes sense. Um, so I think it's, I just wanted to share that because I also didn't want to like say that everything is rainbows and sunshine when like there was some critical feedback. And like, we're trying to take that into account. Um, and I also wanted to make sure that you guys saw that the student perspective didn't necessarily match the, um, percentage in that way.
I appreciate the student perspective and also what you were mentioning about sort of having your win block taught by another educator and sort of seeing some symmetry in that space. So thank, thank you, that's helpful. The, the one last thing I would say is I, I also enjoy that sentence where you talk about, where you got the quote from the student that says that they can pick up things from their classmates. That's, that's key, I think, just because it shows that the material is getting out there. And sometimes kids just succeed better in like a peer-to-peer relationship and that they can find that in the classroom in a, like a, a sort of relationship connection way is fantastic. So, um, it's good to sort of hear that feedback.
And just, just one, one last question. I'm just wondering if there's an, an opportunity to try and find some, some more challenging stuff. I have a seventh grader, so I, and some of her friends are in seventh extended and some aren't. And I hear very different quotes than the ones you guys have here. Um, and some of them are really looking for something that's a little more engaging and a little more, um, challenging instead of just more. They kind of feel like it's just more. I was just wondering if the shift from using, you know, the district resources to using just illustrative math is part of that? And if there are resources that you could, could reuse or make available to the students that might want a different, a different experience?
I would question what, um, the more challenging piece, I think you said instead of just more, more challenging.
Yeah.
Um, because I don't know why this new material wouldn't be, like, I don't know why the material wouldn't be challenging. And it, it makes me wonder if, um, we have kept, um, record of their assessments that we've done. We, we're not grading this section of math and we don't want them to have that extra pressure of a grade.
Right.
But we have kept record of that and I would be very interested to see, as in my class, I already know the answer, that there are very few people achieving at the highest level on those assessments. And so I would wonder if it was the challenge that was missing or some kind of disengagement in the actual material. Because I don't think it's a challenge level from what I'm teaching, from what I'm seeing with my assessment. But I could look at other people's, I have all that data.
I know we've kind of talked about it before with IM, but there, there are a lot of, um, kind of enrichment and challenge problems built into the curriculum resources, which is nice. I don't think there is necessarily the time for them in the extended class, um, because they're learning that new content, that it's the only time that they're going to access it if they go to algebra, because there's not overlap. There's some like kind of extension on ideas once they get to the algebra. But, uh, it's important that they see that content because they will be tested on it and then have to use it later. So, um, yeah, we can, we can certainly look at what we're using for enrichment. You know, I think there, again, through win block, there's been a huge increase in opportunities for individualized learning. And that includes all ends of, uh, the spectrum for student learning. Um, so yeah, I, I would encourage you to just kind of throw that in the.
Yeah, I mean, they're seventh graders.
Link as well. Yeah, thank you.
Yeah.
And I apologize.
Erin, I know you have to jump. Yeah, go ahead, Erin.
I was going to say, I got a very sleepy second grader.
Yeah, go ahead.
Thank you, Erin.
Thank you.
My, my last question is, are you keeping the, um, the test at the end of the program? Like you have to pass a certain test in order to get to Algebra N. Is that still part of the program or are we losing that as well?
So you're, to get to Algebra N, you need to meet three of the four criteria. Um, one of which is a percentage above, I, I want to say 88 or 90, um, on that final assessment. Um, we have just begun talking about that with the kids. We will be providing them with a study guide that just gives them a list of topics. Um, and the assessment will be, um, right before the New York City trip so that we don't lose them after they pass the math. And that's one of the criteria. The other is their, um, success in their own math class, uh, scoring a 90 or better or an A minus or better. Then there is their iReady being at grade level or above by the end of the year. So that's one, two, three. And the fourth one is, oh, is completion, successful completion of the math extended program.
Is that?
So it will be one.
All right, thank you.
So if, if I can just recapture a couple of points of the May here. One is, I, I, I don't want to lose Andrew's point, right? Andrew talked about a short time ago, we were creating an accelerated cohort based on, based on the number of sections, right? So that, that has gone by the wayside, you know? Um, so a number of our practices have changed and have gone by the wayside. The high school is also having an active conversation about points of acceleration and how can we, uh, support students if they're taking math, uh, math course over the summer and how can we, how do, how do we manage that? How do we respond to that? So there'll be more information coming back to the committee. I think, you know, it's, it's unfortunate that Erin had to jump off, but because, but one of the things that's a positive is the questions that are being asked about data, right? So what this program was a short time ago and what this program is now, I think is radically different. The number of the obstacles that have been removed for students to access accelerated math at the middle level, I think it's, it's almost exponential, right? Um, we were, we had considerably fewer students. And the questions that you asked Melissa about the demographic and the students and how they're projecting, is the exact conversation that we need to be having as a next step to this, right? And to have, to continue that, we need to have Amy McLeod and Erin, um, because Erin will be assuming those responsibilities. So she'll be coming back and we'll have both the middle school perspective and the high school perspective, right? But, but in just kind of keeping our eye on what we're doing and also kind of getting feedback from students, which we greatly appreciate. So thank you. Right? Is this notion of how are kids projecting, right? If we have 117, based on the slide, we have 117 projecting, how many are projecting to advanced placement classes, um, as juniors and seniors? And I think that that's, that number is considerably less. And the question needs to start to be why, right?
And who?
And why and who? And that's the demographic piece, right? And so, and, and I think that that really kind of starts to kind of intersect with conversation about equity, conversation about access. And so, but in terms of the middle school, being flexible and setting the stage from our perspective compared to where we were a very short time ago, very short time ago, it is markedly better. And I, I need to thank the administration and I need to thank Lisa. So Lisa, thank you. And, and please tell Erin thank you as well. Um, but you know, the adults are kind of doing this, right? And you, you heard, um, I don't know if you missed this, but you know, Erin Bailey said, you know, we only had, you know, we had three sections or four sections, but we had five sections coming down, right? And so they have also pivoted and jumped in, right? It's not part of their primary role to jump in and teach. It's not part of Lisa's primary role to teach in the role she's in right now, but she did it to make it work for kids, right? And so there, there are, um, the adults are, are really trying to make it work differently than it was just a short time ago. Conversation to be continued. Thank you for the questions, but I don't want that to get lost in what we're doing, you know? Um, and, and Kevin, your, your points about, you know, growth and your points about data. You know, last year at this time, Kevin, I remember you asking questions about, I would like to see iReady data. As a parent, we'd like to see that, would like to hear about it. And I think we're, we're providing that. And I think we're only going to be able to provide more with Cara and her staff and, and the kind of the shifts and the role that Lisa's taking on and also the role that Erin's taking on. So I'll leave it there, but, but thank you for trying to make better what you've, what you've inherited, right? So thank you.
Thank you.
Yep. I think that was the end of the slideshow. The slideshow's down, but that was, that was the end when Erin.
That was the end, yeah.
The, the last slide was a Cradle to Crayons photo.
That's right.
Which student group was that?
Uh, so that's our community service club run by Jim Valencourt, uh, who's one of our. So those kiddos volunteer their time after school, uh, to, to set up different fundraisers and whatnot. And then they took a day down to, uh, Crayons, which has moved this site. I think it's now close to Walfam, Newton?
Oh, I think it's Walfam now.
One of the two. And so, yeah, they went there, gosh, a couple of weeks ago and they did some, uh, did some, did some good work there.
Awesome. Great stuff. Thank you for including that.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. Much appreciated. So I'm going to leave my comments and updates last. Um, next up, I can turn it over to Christine just to give a budget update.
Sure. So you have the financial reports and all that. It's not as exciting as all the, all the fundings going on at the Galvin. But it's the financial reports through April 30th, 2024. You will see that we are under now 5% remaining balance. So we're getting to the last two months of the year. The next month's report, you will see the new unit aid contract will have hit. So it will come really down in the next month. And then you'll see our grants are really, um, only about 7% remaining. We have to spend those down by June 30th. We're well on our way for that. And our revolving accounts are still hovering where they were a little bit last month, but we still have a lot more work to do before the end of June. We have one more circuit breaker payment and you're going to see a lot more, um, purchase orders, uh, for school lunch and also for some out of district tuition costs. So those accounts will be coming down as well. If anyone has any questions on that, you'll see.
Um, just really quick, and I think you've explained this in the past, but Doyle, like how does that kind of work and where will that get?
You, you've asked about this before. So we have a monthly report by location and Doyle is in the negative because we do a transfer from the revolving account. We have, um, the tuitions that we generate for the Doyle pay for, um, the tuitions for six of the, of the teaching staff at the Doyle. So once that transfer is done, that, that, um, negative will go away.
And we'll do that transfer.
We'll do that probably by the end of June.
Okay.
Yep.
Thank you.
But we are, um, still with our available balance in a good, in a good spot. But for the next two months, you will see purchase orders being liquidated. There's a lot of end of work being done and then we have all of our final June payrolls. So the next two months are really busy where, as we're closing out fiscal '24. And then we just have the payrolls for April.
All right, so remove that the school committee approved payroll warrants 42 and 44 as presented.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Judy, can you still see us?
I can.
Okay, those in favor?
All right.
Unanimous?
And that's it for business.
Doug, can I just jump in? Vanessa and Lauren have to get on their way, but this is their last meeting. So could we move them up like our goodbyes and our thank you so they can get on their way?
Yeah, absolutely. Thank you so much. I think Lauren, I'll be seeing you hopefully next week.
Yes, Public Kitchen.
Okay. A visit too?
Yeah, I think so.
Really?
Yeah.
All right.
Wait, where are we going for?
What?
Are we invited with that?
We're, we're doing, so, so Lauren, along with four other students, were part of a panel, um, that helped us open to kick off the first day of school. Um, and they were amazing. And so, um, we've stayed in touch. And so as part of staying in touch, you know, we've, we've had some meetings. You know, they've been into the superintendent's office, to the conference room, um, to have lunch, to have a snack. And sometimes they, um, and, and part of what they get is to eat and what I get is to hear some unvarnished kind of like, this is what's happening in our world. And, um, and so we're, we're setting that up before they, before they graduate. So, and, and Lauren put in her vote for Public Kitchen.
Good vote.
And so, which I like. That's just the best. That's the best.
I would, I would say thank you so much for joining us this year. Um, I think sort of this year, um, we kind of kicked off with that, having, having you folks, um, the youth voice sort of stay at the table and be part of the conversation. Um, and I think sort of you guys have just sort of shown the, the, the value that that creates. I think you've added, um, to a couple of these conversations tonight's included. I think we've had a couple others, um, where I've really appreciated sort of having your voice here. Um, and it's also been fun to see you guys and whether it's like theater band, uh, you know, see you out there, um, on the, on the sports field, sort of taking part in all of the different pieces of the, of sort of the school community that you can. So I know you're out there, I'm glad that you choose to spend some of your time with us, um, in this, you know, some might say more, um, stoic sort of room. But so, so thank you for taking some of that time and sharing with us. Um, I think it's been valuable for us and, and I hope you've enjoyed your time.
Thank you so much. We hope to see you at graduation.
Yes.
Oh, sure.
I think you should. Do you want to share a little about your plans for next year? I think you might have shared before.
Oh, yeah. Um, well, in the fall. I'm going to Yukon and I'm going to be majoring in math and actuarial science.
And we wore our college merch today.
I'm going to be going to UVM and I'm studying human development and family science.
Awesome, congratulations, you guys.
Thank you.
Yeah, I mean, just to kind of.
Yeah, I mean, just to kind of piggyback on what the chair said was, I think your presence has been really, really valuable. I mean, throughout the years, because I know that you've been in a couple of different iterations or both have been in a couple of different iterations. And when Ms. Ingles kind of first suggested like having students like sit at the table, I thought it was a great idea or something we had done decades ago. And it was just really, it's really helpful to kind of hear the perspective that you can provide. So I'm hoping this one night just continues to build and people can be here regularly. Y'all were so busy and such great student leaders. If anything, I think you're also just a great representative of the students and the types of people we want to graduate. And so stay connected, stay involved and good luck at the great institutions that you're going to. But it's been a pleasure seeing you, like Ms. Ingles said, outside of like this room and, and all the different things that you've done, but look forward to hearing about all your future success. So good luck.
Thank you.
I think you guys have set the bar really high.
Oh, yeah. You've set the bar so high. Yeah, absolutely. I've just, even tonight, just like hearing your feedback about math and like doubling up and I don't really think that far into the future because my kids are younger and like just hearing that perspective was just so good. It's just, this year has been so great with, with the kids at the table. The kids, you're adults. I love it. So I love that you're at your own little kid table and now fully adults.
Thank you. Well, it's been great getting to know you guys too through like different commissions or like councils. Like I know Pete, you're on the Human Rights Commission, so I see you at meetings or just seeing you around at town events. It's been great, like even seeing like the superintendents at school or when I'm in guidance and you guys wave at me. It's nice to know that, you know, it's kind of like a familiar face throughout the day.
Yeah. I would definitely say one thing that stuck out to me through this year especially was you guys coming up to Landry Inn for some marching band rehearsals and getting to see that. It was great, kind of getting to see us not sitting here and kind of in our element. So that was really nice of you guys to stop by.
Yeah, and it's always great to shout out, you know, band events and stuff.
Yeah.
We have to promote our events, yeah.
On that note, track meet tomorrow at Burlington High, 3:30, league meet.
Be there.
Girls undefeated league champs, so.
Nice. Good luck.
All right. Well, I'm sure you have plenty to do.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Now the summer months are so quiet.
I, I would just say, I would put in a little bit of correction while I was completely on board with, with them joining us back. I think it was, uh, Ahmed?
Yeah.
You've counseled sort of wanted to bring it back up so that it's something that was missing. And I think sort of unanimously, I think we all kind of agreed. And so I'm, I'm glad we did. I'm glad he, he spoke up. I'm glad everyone sort of jumped in because they clearly, I think they've added to the conversation. Kudos to them for sticking around, you know, for the many hours that we meet.
I, I couldn't agree more. And I think, you know, when we were talking about the approval for the neighborhood Christian school, right? Even getting feedback from the students, you know, I mean, getting their perspective. They've just learned how to put themselves in conversation in such thoughtful ways. It is a skill that's really invaluable, really invaluable. And I think, I, I believe what I say, when I said the, the bar that they have set, you know, the kids who are coming next year should be required to catch, watch one of these meetings and just to, just to see how that happens. But they've, they've really done an amazing job. I love those, I love those guys. They are, they're, I could not, they're fantastic. They're fantastic. So just a few other comments. So it is a busy time of year and the students did a great job covering most of my talking points, which I greatly appreciate. Just to let you, just to let the committee know and the viewing public know, MCAS is going to be wrapping up soon and we are in the throes of, of advanced placement assessments now. And that's really the focus on everything. We are speeding to graduation. Graduation is Saturday, June 1st. The rain date is Sunday, June 2nd. Just to let everyone know, Amy McLeod will be going to the Merrimack Valley Scholars Luncheon tomorrow where William Busby and Erin Stanley will be honored as valedictorian and salutatorian. They're remarkable kids, remarkable kids, so accomplished. And, you know, and just hearing Ms. McLeod talk about the students, you know, with all that they've accomplished and all that they've done, you know, she said to, to cap it off, they're just amazing kids. They're just really great people, which we just couldn't be more proud of them, like we are of our, of our students here, but couldn't be more proud of them and for them to be honored tomorrow at luncheon with their parents. They also to go and get to select a favorite teacher. So there'll be more, there'll be more information on how the luncheon went in our next meeting. But other, other things that we have and irons in the fire, this Friday, Left Field, our project management group that's managing the construction of the high school will be hosting the Wakefield Memorial High School groundbreaking ceremony at 10:00 AM. Right? And so that, that's happening. We're looking forward to that. And next week, next Thursday and Friday, we will be hosting the Hayden's Now Cattle Car Holocaust and Genocide Studies kind of exhibit, which is in Brookline right now. It's leaving Brookline and going to Pingree and then it's coming here, which, you know, has been a couple of years in the works to make that happen, to get it here. And we couldn't be more pleased to host that exhibit and to kind of, you know, welcome that, that conversation that comes from, that will, from that exhibit. So we need to thank you.
Could you expand on, I don't know if it was Vanessa or Lauren mentioned that there might be some community hours?
So on, on Thursday, the 23rd, there will be community hours from 2:15 to 3:10. And on Friday, the 24th, there'll be community hours from 2:15 to 2:40. But this, this has a very, very tight schedule. Groups get in, groups get out. I'm actually traveling to Brookline tomorrow to, to kind of meet with some of their teachers and just to see it, the exhibit there, to also learn about it coming here and, and kind of how, what takeaways we might kind of pick up there. But Amy McLeod has been instrumental. The history department, Jason Pavy, Annie Moody have been, they're, they've been kind of the architects of this whole thing and, and kind of making it work. And so we can't thank them enough. So, but we'll, I'll be sending an email out to the committee tomorrow.
Great.
But Ms. McLeod has notified.
Yeah, I'll forward you, Amy and Mayne, I've sent out a school messenger to all high school parents though. So I'll forward you that so you can see it.
Okay. So yeah, so that's, that's it from comments and updates for me. So thank you so much.
Okay. Thank you. So for chair comments, I'll, I'll keep it quick. All I was going to do was sort of inform everybody, we, we reconstituted our subcommittees and our liaisonships, which was shared out with the larger committee last week. And so just for those watching who might be interested, Ms. Quinn will sit on policy communications and student services and also liaise with the youth council, which is a great group. And then Mr. Davis, finance of facilities and policy and communications, which you will chair, and then continue to sit with the HRC, which is another great, great institute. Collarin, policy and communications and student services, which you will chair. And be the CPAC advisory again. And then Kevin will sit on labor and chair and also on the JLMC, which is super helpful. Thank you for that. And then Mr. Markham will be on labor, personnel, finance of facilities, which he will chair and be on the permanent building committee. Mr. Fontenello, labor and personnel and ESC. And then myself, finance facilities, student services and, and the permanent building committee. Aside from that, we took a poll for when people were available to do a retreat, which is where we sort of set goals and think about things that sort of the school committee wants to accomplish for the year. And so tentatively, we're going to schedule that for July 20th. We'll see if the, our MASC representative, Mass Association of School Committee representative could come in. They're helpful in setting sort of goals, talking about Mass General Law, Chapter 70. And then I think we'll be going through a refresher on superintendent evaluations for this year. So there'll be more to come on that. And I think that's, that's all I had to say around that. Subcommittee reports. Finance of facilities, which would be Tom, but he's not here, I could just say, so we talked about, we talked about the budget process, how, went through how we're already looking at fiscal year '25 and sort of what that's going to look like. So sort of early conversations around that, contracts and, and sort of where, where the budget needs to be. Starting high level, and I think we were sort of saving a lot of subcommittee work last week with sort of tying off loose ends, getting ready for sort of new subcommittees to take part. Labor and personnel. We also talked about, we talked about Teacher Appreciation Week, talked a little bit about the contract. And so I guess student services, did you guys meet?
Yes, we met yesterday. Yesterday. And it's kind, it was kind of, some people were coming in and some people are, are leaving. So Pete was there as, as an exiting member of the student services subcommittee and Melissa came in. And so we were just kind of getting Melissa up to speed on everything and just talked a little bit about what we worked on this past year with school start times and next steps and just reaching out to stakeholders. So more to come on that. And then just kind of wanted to let the members know to brainstorm some ideas of what student services can really focus on for the next year and how we can best be used for the community.
Awesome. Policy and communications.
Yeah, so we finally have religious accommodation policy. So we've been working on this for about nine months now and just to give the community, you know, the, the full scale of this, we did have a revised accommodation policy and then we realized through feedback from faith leaders, leadership in the community and some other community members, that the revision that we had done was flawed. So we went back at it and we have a new revised accommodation policy. So before we discuss, I should make a motion to approve it and then build it up for discussion. So we'll move that the school committee approved religious accommodation policy 906R as presented.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Discussion.
My question for discussion is, does it make sense for the other community members who maybe are just seeing it in the packet for the first, committee members who are just seeing in the packet for the first time, to maybe have until our next meeting before we take a vote? Or, or does everyone feel like they've had enough time to review it? Just because sometimes we put it on the table and then there's a couple of weeks for either input or committee members to look it over and give feedback.
Yeah, I think, I think that's a valid point to bring up. I could kind of summarize the main gist if, if the committee would want. Sorry.
No, it's okay. Our, our practice has been to put it on the table. And so that would allow two weeks to get any feedback. And that's not only committee members, it's also community members as well. And so I, I think what's important maybe for people to hear is, you know, Kevin, you started to say this, we've been working on this for quite some time. We've gotten feedback from MASC. We've gotten feedback from local rabbi clergy and we, you know, and so, and as, and so to put it on the table would allow anyone in the community to also give additional feedback. Right? So.
It's my thought that this had stayed on the table, that we hadn't pulled it up. But are we saying that it is substantially different from what was initially?
Yes.
It is probably, it is absolutely substantially different from the last version.
Do we have to take, do we have to make a motion to take the other one off or no? Because we're just, we just.
Technically, it's still the same policy.
It's still the same. Okay, got it.
It's just substantially.
It's very different, yes.
So do you, do you want to withdraw the motion and hold off and maybe make a motion in two weeks if you think, Pete, are you saying you think it's worth?
I just think it's worth it both, as Doug said, for community members as well as for committee members to, to have the normal two weeks because this is a, a very different looking policy than it looked like when we shared it for the last, you know, when it first went on the table. And I just think it gives the sufficient amount of time for people to give us feedback. That's all.
And I think we were able to craft such a different policy because of the feedback we got and the really powerful feedback that we got from community members. So I definitely want to leave that open because it is so different. I want to leave that open for people to be able to comment on or, or, you know, and give more feedback if, if needed. So, yeah.
Yeah, just a brief summary to the community. One, one focus of the revision is that we decided that it wasn't really the school committee's purview to really be going in and classifying some days as a major religious holiday or this day. And, you know, I think we came to the realization that, A, we obviously don't want to get in the business of prioritizing certain holidays, which would be in reality discriminating against certain holidays that we were not prioritizing. Like the very fact of trying to classify certain days would in, by itself be discriminatory. So that was one major realization of the flaw of the previous policy that we had proposed. And, and then, yeah. And then the second is that the real crux of this policy is that it pretty much is saying that there will be accommodations made for anyone who is observing a holiday for religious reasons. It definitely outlines specific accommodations that will be made for students and I think it is pretty complete. So, yeah. So I guess we'll, I can amend the motion to put it on the table for.
Yeah, I think it is still on the table.
It's on the table.
Okay. So just withdraw your motion.
Second.
Okay. Withdrawn and seconded. All right. So hopefully in two weeks, everyone will have enough time with it. Thank you for all the hard work. I know you, you went through a number of iterations on this and got a lot of feedback, which, which caused it to get sort of reworked numerous times. Having been on policy, I know what that can be like. So I would just, I would say if, if people had feedback, Pete, you're the new chair of policy, can we just direct questions to petdavis@wpsk12.org?
Yeah, that's fine.
Wonderful. Okay.
And we also have updated homework guidelines that, so I'm going to make the motion that we move that the school committee lay on the table for two weeks consideration and vote at the May 20, sorry, I can't read, May 28th, 2024 school committee meeting, the WPS, Lincoln Public Schools Homework Guidelines as Presented.
Second. Motion's been made and seconded. Any discussion?
I will say, I, I appreciate working with everyone on it. I think we tried to make it as robust as possible, but, you know, I will never say it goes far enough. So I, I will always say it doesn't go far enough. I'm very interested in learning more about this equity, grading equity piece that you said is going to be coming in the fall. Right? Is that what you said? So I'm very interested in that and I'm hoping that will kind of tie into some of the, it's almost like a philosophy, these guidelines of like how we feel public schools should be like really like looking at homework. And so I'm really looking forward to hearing more about that and hoping it aligns well. That's all.
Okay. I have one process question. If we could just, where would this document live?
The handbook.
In each handbook?
Correct.
Elementary, middle, high?
Correct. Which is easily accessible now with this new website.
I know, right? Okay.
Yeah, it was, it would not be in the policy.
Okay. Though, yeah, I was just curious where it lived.
It is not a policy.
Right? Okay. Wonderful. Anything else?
Yeah, I would just emphasize to anyone that was reading it that the, one major revision we did from the beginning was the second paragraph in these guidelines, which it used to be in the bottom. We're trying to center it a little bit on top. And that really basically says homework is flexible, should never take over a student's life outside of the classroom. Really gets into some of the, you know, feedback we're hearing from community members, you know, about if homework was stressing out their kids overly, trying to make sure that homework is always going to be constructive but never overwhelming to students to the, to the point of emotional devastation, right? So we, that was a little strong. But, but for that second paragraph, I think is, well, everyone should be looking at.
Yeah, the, the goal there is, you know, we've heard parents say, you know, you know, my physics homework, in our house, I can say, physics homework would, you know, there'd be a meltdown at the island, right? And so, and really, all that we needed to do is just, just simply reach out to the teacher to say, you know, my, you know, my daughter's stuck. Can she, can she see you? And the answer always, always, absolutely, we can help, right? And so when the teachers know more, they can help more, and they're more than willing to do it. They're, in fact, they would prefer to have that information and, and not have students reading, reaching a point of frustration where it's melting the, melting the house down, right? Anyway, I just, I'm just adding to your comments, but, yeah, well made. Thank you.
Oh, that is all, that is all we got for policy. Thank you so much. Moving on to liaison reports.
Do we need to vote on that one?
Oh, did we not vote on that one?
We didn't. We were discussing.
Sorry. Motion was made and seconded and discussed.
Oh, to put it on the table, yeah.
We discussed. Those in favor of putting the homework guidelines on the table? Judy, can you see us?
I can see you.
Okay, good. That was unanimous also. All right, now moving on, liaison reports.
I have CPAC met yesterday. There, they are currently working on the superhero nominations across the Wakeville Public Schools. And right now, they have 34 nominations in the block for that. So, yeah, pretty cool. And they are going to be putting together a recorded version that Rosie, the special ed director, Rosie Galvin, will be creating for the new IP, IEP process. And, because it's going to look drastically different than any parents who currently have a child on an IP, is what it looks like now. And so she already gave one, I believe, at the parent, what is that, like 101?
Parent University.
Parent University. I always get the one, Wakeville 101 and Parent University crossed. So she already gave that, and so she's going to be giving like a, a version of that, and then an opportunity for people to send in questions. And then there's going to be a live version of that in the fall. We just figured, they just kind of figured at the end of the school year, people are very tired and burnt out and going to, and everyone is going in all different directions at this time of the year. And so having something live might not be really great, but having a recorded version for flexibility for parents. So that, that'll be more to come on that. And then I believe, that is it. That's all we have for feedback.
Great. Thank you.
The Human Rights Commission has a very busy June, but I'm just going to focus on the beginning of June for this one, because we're going to meet again at the end of the month. So June 3rd at 6 o'clock at the Americal, they're going to be having a commemoration for Pride Month, where they're going to raise the Pride Progress flag. And then I do want to say unfortunately Vanessa's gone, but I will say as the representative to the HRC, she has been incredible. The amount of support she's provided to the commission, she's been one of the most engaged members on that commission. And I just want to give my personal thanks. I know I'm echoing with the chair of, prior chair of that commission, I said Ms. Okun, but just wanted to give my thanks as well for all of her contributions.
Great. Okay. Future dates and agenda items. Our next school committee meeting will be on Tuesday, May 28th, 2024, at 7 o'clock. We have a whole host of future agenda items. I think there's one thing I'm pretty sure is going to be on there, which is a food service update. We had pushed out. And is there anything not on the current future agenda list, which is long, that anyone else would like to see?
You can always email me.
You can.
You can always email. There's a bunch of stuff that's gotten added to the list.
Yeah. And then maybe just formally add, you know, the, one of the great school committee events we've had is at the Metco office. So a formal visit to the, the Metco office for the.
Yeah, we, we talked about that earlier in that, sort of talking about whether the springtime or sort of the fall would be the better time. And it just seems like, I know legislatively, there's a lot going on in the, the State House with Metco. And so I, I go back and forth about whether or not I want to sort of burden them with our presence. So right now, I think Dr. Lyons reached out to.
Glavia.
To Glavia, okay. And to see if maybe a visit in the fall would be good.
We're just running out of runway. Just running out of meetings, you know? Yes.
And, and that's about it. School committee comments?
Pete? Just want to pass my thanks on to Catherine Dingra. She's leaving Wake, the Town of Wakefield, Health and Services Department, to take a job in another community. As part of being on this committee, I've seen her come in front of us many times to talk about kids and risky behaviors and all kinds of other stuff. But I've also seen just how responsive she is to any questions that I've ever had regarding kids or situations. And I think she's going to sorely be missed. So, you know, maybe there's some hope of bringing her back at some point. But there is a celebration as part of the Wakeup Meeting, I believe it's next week, where her time will be celebrated. But I, I do want to pass on my thanks. She's been a great support staff, not only for Wakeville Public Schools, but for the town as a whole.
Yeah, could, could not agree more. And yeah, the Week of Breakfast, their annual breakfast is taking place, I think, next week. And yeah, there'll be a few moments for, for Catherine. One benefit is that while her job may be changing, her residence will not be. So she still will be tied into the community. It's like, you know, people say they leave, but you, you can't, you're still there, in some, some form or fashion. I think she did mention about sort of being advisory for Wakeup and continuing some of that work for our community. So I feel buoyed by that.
Yeah. Her, her work and her partnership with the Youth Risk Behavior Survey has been amazing for, next year will be my 10th year here. And for all of those years, she has come to this meeting, sat at that table, and has kind of summarized what the challenges are and what she feels we need to prioritize. She's also been masterful at securing grants. You know, not very consistent, you know, not, you know, hundreds of thousands of dollars, but enough to kind of keep small projects going, small counseling projects going. She's really been, really an ally for the Wakefield Public Schools. And she's going to be missed. And we wish her the best. And you're spot on. She's, we know where she lives.
Anybody else?
No. All right. I just watched the musical last week. It was great. Yeah.
Putnam County Spell Ivy?
Spell Ivy, yeah. I got, I got, I got brought up, I was in the show for a little bit, but unfortunately I was the first one kicked out.
Kevin couldn't spell Wakefield.
Dengue.
Yeah. But that was a great show. You know, they always do a great job, so.
It's my first musical production at the Black Box Theater, and I was just taken aback at the, the difference between the Black Box and the Galvin stage. It's just more intimate. Those, those kids are top notch. What, yeah. Yep, it was awesome.
I may sound like a broken, broken record, but I'll echo that. I mean, every time I see our students perform, whether it's musical or, or singing or just acting, I'm just blown away by their talent. I mean, I have, I've said this before joking about myself, I have no talent in these regards. Like I can't sing and I can't act. I'm not very funny. But these kids, I mean, they get up there and like, they're almost like professionals up there, just seeing how well they perform. And then, you know, I saw Mr. and Ms. Morel out, you know, conducting and playing music. I mean, it was, it was amazing.
Yeah, my kid was like, that's my BNT teacher.
Yeah.
It was awesome.
It's amazing.
All right. Anything else? No? Good luck on MCAS for everybody, all the third graders, fourth, all the little kids that like get stressed out. Don't worry about it. Good luck. We have a motion for adjournment?
Yep. Move that the school committee adjourns meeting of Tuesday, May 14th, 2024.
Second. Motion made and seconded. Those in favor? Unanimous. All right. We'll see everyone in a couple of weeks.
Thank you.
Thank you, Judy.